And there we go. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this January 10, 2023, Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order. And I'd like to start with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Olivas. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which accepts one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We're on item number three. Announcements in addition to changes to the agenda?
Good evening and Happy New Year, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. We have no changes or additions to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And proceeding with what was supposed to be a surprise, we have, before tonight's business, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Barboa, who already peaked. But we have a little certificate for Commissioner Adrian Barboa, and it says, "Presented to Adrian Barboa, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners from January 2022 to January 2023." And we are so proud and happy that you are here with us still as the Vice Chair. But I just wanted to say, we've known each other for a few years now. But not only is she a strong advocate for her district and the county, but she just has a heart of gold. Sometimes that heart is on her sleeve. But anyway, I would like to present this to Commissioner. And thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Did you want to say?
I'll just say, everybody knows I like to talk, so of course. But yay, I felt so honored and grateful, and I learned so much, and we have excellent staff. We're so lucky to have such a great staff. And the county manager is our leader that really is elected as we get to show up and have everything we need at our fingertips. And I just feel so grateful to have been able to serve as Chair. And thank you. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Item four, Proclamations. County Manager Julie Murgas Baca will present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at this time, I'd like to call up Clay Campbell and members of our Bond Committee that are present, please. So as they come up, I'd like to read this acknowledgement. The members of the Bond Committee represent community industry leaders in Burn Leo County who greatly supported the county's general obligation bonds that were on the November 8, 2022, general election ballot. And I want to mention that because of their efforts, all our bonds passed, I think it was at 70% voter approval, which is phenomenal. So I just want to say that. Bond Committee volunteers gave their own time to educate the public and to advocate for voter approval of the bonds. Congratulations to all the Bond Committee members who volunteered time and diligent efforts resulted in the passing of all the 2022 general obligation bonds. Because of your work, the Burn Leo County has over $40 million in general obligation bonds that will go towards needed roadway, storm drain, recreation, housing, library, and civic projects that will benefit the entire community and enhance our everyday quality of life. The 2022 Better Burn Leo County Bond Committee members are Carlos Padilla, who's the Chair, who's standing right here next to me, to my left. And Dave Campbell is here as well. Thank you, Dave. And also Liz Hamm, Bob Wood, Jonathan Peña, Scott Perkins, Craig Hoover, Benjamin Gardner, Richard Torres, and George Radovic. So we want to thank them all. They all couldn't make it. But without you, we wouldn't have our $40 million to spend on some great projects. And I'd like to call them up. Would you like to say a few words, Carlos? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Just to say, I think all of you are aware that the Bond Committee is an all-volunteer group, members of the community, business members. And basically, we get a lot of credit, but we get great support from county staff. Clay, Julie's staff, all of them put together the bond package. They're there for us to answer all the questions that we might have. And our job is basically to advocate for the bond package. So we raise funds, and we use those funds exclusively for advertisements, billboards, radio spots, things like that, just trying to explain to the public how important the bond package is to the county. And over the years, we've been very successful, and we're very happy to serve and to help the county out in this manner.
It's an easy job when you have a great package to put together. So thank you for putting such a wonderful bond package together. Thanks, staff, for that. It really is not difficult to convince people that they need to help improve the community, and that's exactly what this bond package does. So thank you for your support, and I'm pleased to help in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know Clay just told me, he says, "I don't need to come up and say anything." But you know, I think we all know Clay Campbell makes it happen. So Clay, thank you so much. And so thank you very much. We're done with our presentation. And if you'd like to, was there anything else? I think we're good. I think we're good to go. All right. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Now, we will move on to item number five, Public Comment and Communications. You will have two minutes to share your comments. You will then be notified when your time is up. For those participating via Zoom, you will be muted and moved to the waiting room. Should any of the Commissioners have follow-up questions to your comments, you will have an opportunity to answer. Julianne, how many do we have signed up to speak?
Madam Chair, we have 12 signed up, about five on Zoom, and the rest in person.
You may call the first speaker.
Thank you. We will start with the Zoom participants. Begin with Markel Musgrave, followed by Genevieve Laranaga, followed by Bill Wagner.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Markel Musgrave. I'm a citizen of the Pueblo of Nambay, a lifelong resident of the state of New Mexico, and I am the COVID Technical Assistance Specialist for the National Indigenous Women's Resource Center. And I serve on the Advisory Council for the New Mexico Memorial Project. I want to share my support of the New Mexico COVID Memorial Project. Every community in New Mexico has lost cherished loved ones to SARS-CoV-2 since 2020, and we are now approaching nearly 9,000 New Mexicans lost to the virus. Native Americans have been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, and life expectancy for them has dropped 6.6 years since 2020. Many families across New Mexico never had the opportunity to properly mourn, grieve, and honor their loved ones who often passed on isolated. This is a collective trauma we are experiencing across communities and cultures, not only the loss of our valued loved ones, but nowhere to acknowledge and process the immense grief of so many. New Mexico has the opportunity to lead in establishing a COVID memorial, giving those lost a proper honoring and remembrance. And Burn Leo County has the opportunity to provide that solace and healing for the many families and communities grieving the loss of a loved one to COVID-19. Together, we can heal and inspire other states to provide the same place of reverence. Thank you.
Okay. Genevieve Laranaga, followed by Bill Wagner, followed by Bill Weiss.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Genevieve Laranaga, and I wish to speak about how important it is to our family and friends having a permanent COVID-19 memorial to visit regularly. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about my personal story. I lost my husband, who I was married to for 36 years. He was my high school sweetheart. His name was Edward Laranaga. And we lost him 10 months ago to COVID. He was vaccinated and boosted, and I feel like I have to mention that when I tell his story, because so many people still judge and sometimes make it seem like it was his fault. My boys and I still relive the last day we got to speak to him and say our "I love yous" and "goodbyes" right before he was intubated. He told our sons how proud he was of them and what great young men they are. He told his parents and brother how much he loved them. And he told me he was so happy he got to marry me. After he was intubated, we were only allowed to talk to him on an iPad video, and were never allowed to be by his side in the hospital until the day he died. I think what haunts me and my boys most is how scared and how lonely he must have been without his family by his side to reassure him and hold him. A memorial would help us connect with other families that understand our pain and what we went through. It would be a special place to see our loved ones' picture and remember them. Our family and friends would love a permanent memorial to remember our beloved Edward Laranaga and recognize that this is our reality. Please support our permanent COVID-19 memorial to help my boys and I have a place to try and heal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laranaga. I'm sorry for your loss. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Wagner, followed by Bill Weiss.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission. My name is Bill Wagner. I am the Executive Director of Central Savila. We are an outpatient behavioral health organization and social services organization that provides services to county residents in the South Valley, in the International District. We are a participant in the Behavioral Health Initiative, BHI, which was an effort by the county to address the huge needs that came out of the audit that was done by the Martinez administration that resulted in false accusations of fraud that shut down many of the most important providers in the state to low-income and poor residents receiving Medicaid for behavioral health services. My organization started about 10 years ago, so really paralleling this process and watching the development of the BHI. So as the safety net institutions for behavioral health in the state were dismantled, the BHI stepped in, and 67% of the voters of Burn Leo County voted for it. An overwhelming number said, "We need these services in our county, and we're willing to pay extra gross receipts tax to do it." The BHI initiative has provided important resources and has begun to fill the gap of what was lost in 2013. But I just want to point out that the evolution of new providers stepping in is not something that happens overnight. It's something that takes time, and it takes commitment, and it takes investment. And the BHI, at least for Central Savila I can speak to, has been one of the things that has allowed our organization to exist and to become sustainable. It's still a long way from being sustainable, and the amount of resources and infrastructure that was lost when our safety net was dismantled is still being rebuilt.
Dr. Wagner.
And speaking just briefly to the resident.
I just wanted to mention, I asked Dr. Wagner to be here today to talk to this issue because it's an item later in the agenda. So I would like to extend the privilege to continue past your two minutes. Thank you. Please continue. Bill, Dr. Wagner.
Dr. Wagner, are you still on?
Oh, I'm sorry if I interrupted in the midst of that, but very important member of our community and the Behavioral Health Initiative. Thank you, Dr. Wagner, for speaking. Next.
Mr. Bill Weiss.
My name is Bill Weiss. I am a retired physician from the University of New Mexico, working in community medicine, primary care, and public health. And since the early 2000s, I've been very much involved in drug policy and trying to work on the infrastructure and policies for drug treatment. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Proposed Behavioral Health Working Group and make just the comment that we need more behavioral health services, and we have far too few. We are dependent upon irregular sources of funding that enable the county to move forward, and for that matter, others, to move forward with services. This is often opportunistic. We have to move towards greater coordination, systems development, in order to even begin to address the deficit in services in a coherent manner that connects with the rest of the system. I think the idea of the Behavioral Health Working Group can be a significant step in moving forward with that and try to systematically address the enormous gaps that exist. So I'll stop there and just leave this as a comment in support of having such a working group.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss.
Okay, it does look like we lost connectivity with Dr. Wagner. For the record, we had Amy LaGrange and Tania Chavez also signed up via Zoom, but they are not online. So we'll move to in-person, starting with Mr. Don Schrader.
I would be ashamed as hell to watch football, boxing, mixed martial arts, and all violent sports. The donated brains of 110 out of 111 dead former NFL players had serious brain damage. Many football players suffer concussions. Concussions cause severe headaches, Alzheimer's, depression, alcoholism, other drug addiction, violence toward family and friends, suicide. Why do many mothers and fathers watch and cheer as their son bruises and bloodies another man in football or as a boxer? Why is pain and violence between men as boxers, football players, or as soldiers in war far better accepted by millions of mothers and fathers than their sons giving and receiving affectionate sexual pleasure with men? Why are millions of mothers and fathers proud of their sons severely injuring other men for money, fame, and awards? Why cheer pain and violence between men? Why damn affectionate hot sex and passionate romance between men? Is this world the lunatic asylum of the universe?
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Moving on to Olivia Ortiz, followed by Joshua James Lawrence, followed by John Veltrey.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners, and to our new Commissioners. I'm John Veltrey. I am the person that sent you a certified document that I got, signed copies back. Hopefully, you all received it. This document is the New Mexico Election Transparency Network that I'm the chairperson for, an organization that you'll hear more about throughout 2023. This document included who we are, what we're about. It included some legislative strategies for the executive summary. On the cover letter itself, it talked about the approved resolution, which I gave each of you a copy earlier last year of what we accomplished in Sandoval County on June 22. And also, it talks about the top three issues in that resolution, because it's not addressing all of them. But the things that we're trying to work with the legislative body in the next session coming up, basically voter identification, efficiency, removal of the inactive voters, removal of unsupervised ballot drop boxes. We're looking at those issues. We put in this document also the current statutes and laws and the proposed way we would like that to look to maybe make it more comfortable for everybody when they're voting to feel their votes are counting. This is an effort, as again, I know two of you are new to me. I'm a nonpartisan, so I represent everybody. I don't have a party. I look for who I feel in my heart and mind deserves my vote. I want to make sure it counts, just like you do. And so I represent a fairly large group of people across New Mexico and outside of the state as well. So anyway, I just want to let you know, if you have questions on this document, my number, my email, is on there. Feel free to give me a call. I'd be happy to talk to any one of you.
Thank you very much.
And I'd just like to thank you for your time and wish you a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Ramona Goolsbee, followed by Ryan Zamora.
Good evening. My name is Ramona Goolsbee, and I am a resident of Sandoval County, but I come into Albuquerque an awful lot. I want to congratulate Chair Baca and the new Commissioners and hope everyone has a wonderful New Year. I'm here today to talk just briefly about information, the IPRA requests. I received a copy of a flyer last fall from the New Mexico Counties, which is an organization that I'm sure you're all involved with. And one of the priorities is IPRA election-related records and data. They're trying to change laws. And in many of the groups that I've been in, there has been voiced concern that these laws that they're attempting to change would limit the ability of the citizens to get the information that they deserve. Part of the request is transparency. That's how you have trust in your government, is by transparency. When people want information and they can call up a government agency and request it, and that agency provides it, that tells the people that they're not afraid to show what they've done. They are not trying to hide anything and that they're working with people. I know that Senator Ivy Soto has worked with the county clerks on this issue. I have the draft, actually. They've worked with the county attorneys, but I never saw anything in these documents about them reaching out to the public and asking their opinion as well. So please be mindful when we go forward with legislation to protect the right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. How's everybody doing? I'm Ryan Zamora. I'm here on behalf of the Burnley County Deputy Sheriff's Association. I'm the president of the association. Usually, Sam Rodriguez and Santiago Roy will come with me. Sam is the treasurer. He's a lot better at the stats and speaking than I am, but tonight, he gave his wife some time off from the kids so that she can go out and have a girls' date night. So I'm going to do my best to represent his stats well. One of the times he came and spoke to y'all, he explained that we've seen a significant decrease in the amount of applicants that are coming out to our testing to try and get new deputies into the department. Since the last update, we've had three testings, two in November and one in December before the holiday. We had a few people go out to those and invite everybody that went out. We had seven total people pass physical fitness and the academic portion, which is our written test. And some of the numbers that I went over with some of the county commissioners, both current and previous, of those six people typically will see one or two pass and get into the academy. That's an update on some of the numbers that he gave you previously. I also pulled some numbers over the past five years that I'll go over somewhat quickly. Looks like I have about a minute left. So I pulled numbers for our resignations versus the amount of people that we have graduate our academy, which includes both FTO and the academy itself. And FTO is our OJT program. It's a three-month program, which is about to transition to a little bit longer to give deputies, or new deputies, a little bit more time in training. In 2017, we graduated eight people through that program, and we had 15 resignations and retirements. Moving forward into 2018, 28 graduates, 19 retirements and resignations. I'm going to skip to the bottom here. 2022, 12 graduated, 23 resignations and retirements. 2023, we have 12 on FTO, and so far, we've seen 11 in this past year of resignations and retirements. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Mr. Zamora, your time is up, but I would really like to speak with you about that more. Maybe we can schedule a meeting. I'm very interested in your statistics.
Yes, ma'am. I'll reach out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, Barboa.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize our new sheriff, Mr. John Allen, in the audience today. Thank you for being here. I know the sheriffs, and I just wanted to recognize and send my appreciation. I know sheriffs are always here for our meetings to help and support us here. And just thank you for watching over my home as we've been targeted for attacks. I just really appreciate and want to personally thank the sheriff and the sheriff's office and officers for helping keep watch of my home during this sort of crazy time. And I'm sure of the other Commissioners. And I just want to recognize and thank you for that.
Thank you. Julianne, I did get a text back from Dr. Wagner that he was cut off, but he's back on. If he could have just another moment to speak about the Behavioral Health Working Group that's on the agenda.
Hi, this is Dr. Wagner. I'm so sorry for my connection loss. Just what I was going to finish my statement saying is that when the infrastructure was lost, it takes a long time to build up. BHI has been doing good work, and it's now had several years behind it to sort of reflect on and look towards the future. And I think that there is a resolution being introduced tonight for Burn Leo County Behavioral Health Working Group that I would support a deeper dive into looking with providers and other leaders in the community to really think about how to rebuild the infrastructure in behavioral health and make a longer-term commitment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Wagner. And that concludes public comment. So we move on to item six, approvals. I move approval of December 13, 2022, administrative meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Seeing if I can say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We'll move on to item seven, approval of the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move to approve the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes. And let's see. Department of Health Services outpatient. And let's see, Department of Health Services outpatient medical provider for the outpatient behavioral health clinic.
So that was adopted under?
Yeah. I apologize. So we're on item eight, adoption of ordinances. Item eight A, finance, public hearing on low-income property tax rebate pursuant to NMSA 7214.3. Timothy Olivas is to present. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Timothy Olivas, the Special Projects Coordinator for Finance Division. Excuse me. This item is in compliance with New Mexico Statute 7-2-14.3, which requires that in January of every odd-numbered year, the Board conduct a public hearing on the question of whether the property rebate benefiting low-income property taxpayers should be made available through adoption of accounting ordinance. Funding of the rebate would be the sole responsibility of the county. All counties are required to comply with the statute unless they have already adopted the rebate ordinance. To date, only Los Alamos and Santa Fe Counties have enacted this program. The actions are as follows. First, conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony on the question of whether the low-income property tax rebate should be adopted. And second, motion to introduce for adoption a low-income property tax rebate ordinance.
Madam Chair, for the record, nobody signed up for the public hearing for this item.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So move? But no, we don't have a motion. Motion to introduce the adoption for, no, we do not have a motion. Sorry.
Seeing no motion, then we will move forward.
I have some questions.
Okay. Question?
Are we taking questions at this point?
Yes.
Yeah. So I did get a briefing on how this would affect Burnley County and the budget. So some of the things that I had in my mind, as you all know, you know, a large portion of my district is unincorporated Burnley County. I know that, and I don't know if they've looked into this as we move forward into doing this, but I know there's a lot of properties that don't pay no property taxes based on some of the criteria we have with agriculture, you know, growing alfalfa, different things that they've done in the South Valley to try to, you know, mitigate and minimize, you know, property taxes for people who historically have been there and definitely don't come from families of wealth. A lot of these properties, you know, have been handed down from generation to generation. A couple of things that I had in my mind was, is there, you know, one of the things I think we need to look forward into the future here, and I know Burnley County will probably be the one place that, you know, things will happen because we're doers. We get things done here at Burnley County. But, you know, I plan for elderly. And so, when I asked about, you know, the property taxes for people who were 65 and older, how many of those would that affect and how would that affect our budget? Because at this point, you know, they're barely making it, and we know that, right? And we know that there's a big struggle because no government entity, in my opinion, has put a game plan forward to looking at how we're going to address our aging community from our baby boomers on. There's a lot more elderly out there, and what kind of relief do we have? I know that there's other programs that are available, but do the elderly know about those programs? How can we at Burnley County not only look at what we can do through this program, but how can we connect with other programs to make sure that our elderly community are in connection with that? I think that's always been the biggest gap, right? When you're looking at all the social services that we put forward, a lot of times and a lot of the stories I heard in my district was, oh, I didn't know that happened, or I didn't know how that existed, or how do you apply for that, or how do you do that? I think a lot of our programs go unknown, to be honest with you. And I think we could do better in the county at making sure that what we know from the state level and maybe even through the city and Burnley County is how we can do to help, you know, and especially, and I know that people are making $924,000. It's a struggle no matter how old you are, but we're really not looking at what we can do as a game plan for especially the elderly. I know that we're discussing this at this point, right? I don't know if there's an action item on this, but if there was, you know, I would definitely like to, you know, explore an amendment to look at maybe for it not to be so, such a burden on our budget and still be able to comply with state statute. I would probably defer to our county attorney to see if there is wiggle room through that and how we look at that and how we move forward. I think we've all been updated on how this will affect the budget, but I think at the other day, our job is to figure out how we help our communities. And so, is there a compromise here? Is there a way we could move some element of this forward without this being a complete burden? And that's what I have. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Commissioner Casada?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner. Those are good questions. Appreciate it, and I know we discussed this in the briefing. We wouldn't be able to do it on this item since it's a statutory requirement limited to that single issue, but I think we could work on that item. And if you recall, I think statements by the incoming assessor, he had the same plan, you know, to make sure that we get the information out there with regard to property tax, taking advantage of those protections for our elderly and poor. And I'm happy to work with you, and we could put a package together on it and bring it through the regular process or just have a way of doing it through action. May not necessarily need action here, but happy to work with you on that.
One more question, Master. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Martins.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, a question to you, Mr. County Attorney, is what if it fails? I mean, we're voting on it now, and I'm just asking because this is mandated through the state, correct? And it's something they're telling us that we have to do. And just being the devil's advocate here, what if it fails?
If there's no action taken tonight, which can happen, it has to be presented, public hearing, action or no action. No action is status quo, which means nothing would happen. If we did take action, then we would have that kind of process that we talked about where you would have to look at the actual cost to, and how you offset that cost, which would be probably some implementation of another tax to cover it. So you'd be giving a tax break but implementing another tax to cover it, which is problematic.
Borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, is that the saying?
Good to hear.
Okay. And so, what we're voting tonight, and just so I'm clear, so what we're voting on tonight is just moving it forward. We're not actually voting on implementing this, but we're voting on exploring it, right? And how we're going to do it, right?
I think if you don't take action on this, then you'll retain the status quo, so there would be no vote necessary. If there's not a motion, there's not a vote, so there's no reason for a vote on it. It's just the presentation of the issue and up to the will of the Commission. The other items that you've talked about can come up as separate items. This is just that very specific statutory requirement that have it, that it must be presented in every odd-numbered year in January with a public hearing. And that's what's happening now. That's that presentation to look if there's any public comments and then whether or not the Commission would like to take action. If you decide not to take action, you've already placed it on the agenda, but not to take further action, then you would just retain the status quo, what's currently in place.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
So I've got some additional thoughts on the item. I agree with Commissioner Casada in terms of trying to think of ways to help especially the elderly. If you're 80 years old and you're limited income, there may not be as many opportunities as if you're limited income but you're 24 years old. So I hear what he's talking about, and I agree with the principle, but one of my concerns with this amendment, if it were to move forward, would be what about the 80-year-old who's a renter, who really needs the help? Because their rent goes up every year more than property taxes do. Then we're not addressing that. And I think that's probably a bigger need than someone who has the asset of a residence. The other thing in terms of income is, you know, what if it's a business owner who minimizes their income by putting all their, taking no income, putting all their personal expenses into their business and qualifying for a low-income status and getting an additional tax break in terms of like a loophole? So that's my concern with the language of this as it's written, not the intent, but what the possible outcome would be, that the folks that do need the help may not be receiving it. The people that need the help the most may not be receiving it in spite of this language and that there could be individuals who exploit it for their own advantage even if they don't need it. That's my concern.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I would suggest that perhaps that we can speak with the new assessor and talk about some of these concerns and issues that you're bringing up and figure out how to address that in the future. I think it's really important. Commissioner Barbosa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, I love the discussion today. I think I agree, right, that we couldn't, well, first, I guess I would say that to the public, as I try and follow and understand this, right, this is a statutory by the state, but it was, it's unfunded. So it's not like, if Burnley, you know, Burnley County would have to readjust our whole entire budget, right? Or like Ken was saying, submit another tax, which sort of defeats the purpose of lowering taxes for people on their housing properties. And I feel like, I just wanted to say, it's an unfunded state statutory, right, that like if we can't afford it, I can't imagine that other counties could implement something like this. But in our conversations, I know that our Shirley Regan, our Director, were talking about some of the, exploring some of the things that Commissioner Casada were talking about, like maybe we could, you know, single out a certain age or income brackets, or we could start a fund or, and just I totally support, how do we just better get information out to the public and sometimes help them? Because, right, if our, like talked about in our meetings, there's a teen years program that has teens going and helping elders just know how to use and navigate the internet. And so much of our stuff is online now that if our elders that could qualify for this tax break might not be able to get through the paperwork. So I know we talked about it, and our staff are looking deeper into some of those things we could do to still really best. So those are just my comments.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I wanted to thank our staff, Director, Deputy County Manager Shirley Regan. We got an excellent briefing on this, and I too share some of Commissioner Benson's concerns that while this may be well-intentioned, I believe it puts the county in a fiscally difficult position. And I think that as Commissioner Casada and others have mentioned here tonight, we may be better, we may be better off resourcing programs that already exist or looking at other innovative programs around the country. We do things like senior meals. I know that we have programs, and the city has these programs as well, helping seniors with yard care, things around their house that need to be done that they may not otherwise be able to afford, and also talking about helping tenants, which is a big concern with rents rising rapidly. I think we can fund things like rental assistance and other affordable housing programs to make sure that people can stay in their homes. So I think that my commitment here is that we should follow up on some of those other items that I believe can help these same groups. And the last piece of this is that in the briefing, it was presented that many times these types of rebates are also not taking advantage because this is a, this is an income tax rebate. So one must first of all file income taxes, and then they must elect to take this rebate. And we see with some of the other rebate programs, there are veterans rebates and other things that the state offers and the state pays for that have very low utilization rates despite what they should have. And so, my concern is that, again, this may be something that's taken advantage by certain groups and doesn't actually help the most needy in this population. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? I know motion or second. We will move on to item nine, adoption of resolutions. And we have three resolutions. Madam Clerk, will you please provide numbers for the following items? Burnley County Behavioral Health Systems of Care Working Group?
Yes, ma'am. AR 2023-2.
Capital Outlay Request to the State of New Mexico Amendments?
AR 2023-3.
And the final Parks and Recreation and Open Space COVID-19 Memorial for Dr. E. A. Swede Schuler Regional Recreation Complex.
Yes, ma'am. 2023-4. AR 2023-4.
Thank you. So we'll go to the top of those and talk about 9A here. And I'll turn this to Commissioner Olivas and Commissioner Vice Chair Barbosa, who are sponsoring this resolution.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to have worked on this, and I think I'll just start to introduce, and of course, give it to, we do have a floor amendment that we want to share to the resolution as well. But to start us off, right, we, recognizing as we have that our voters in 2014 largely at like a 70, over 70% margin voted to approve an additional one-eighth of a 1% gross receipts tax for behavioral health. And I, we, that was in 2014 and 2015, the Burnley County Commission passed our initiative ordinance, the Behavioral Health Initiative Ordinance, to hold harmless that gross receipts for the purpose of improving county's behavioral health system. As we heard Dr. Wagner speak during public comment, right, there, the gutting of the system had happened in a previous administration, which really leaves the county, Burnley County, as really the largest resource because of the generosity of our voters that really believe, I believe, voted for that in large amounts because they understand that we need access to treatment or resources for folks facing substance use disorder and that the answer to those solutions is not just direct incarceration and our law enforcement is better served when they're handling violent crime rather than dealing with folks suffering with a substance use disorder. So now, seven years in, we've done a lot of great things. We have so much that we can be thankful for, both that the county has done to build the infrastructure of behavioral health care, infrastructure, buildings, and really the services with both our partners, contract community partners and contract entity partners like Q and M, and we have MCT Crisis Intervention Groups, and we've done so much to be proud of. And we are also in the place to really look at how do we now make those connections? How does the county as the biggest resource make some connections and really help build a continuum of care that is running seamlessly, right? So we worked on this together and really named that some expertise that we can bring at the table in service of making that vision forward to build upon the successes of the county's behavioral health services. And I guess just for my colleagues on the Commission, right, we wanted to really name that these, there be, we're asking that the Commission approve, really making this small nimble working group of experts along with county staff to really review sort of all the current and previous strategic planning processes, get the right partners at the table, ensure that law enforcement, people with lived experiences, either family or folks in recovery or living in the place right now, right? Courts and corrections, addiction treatment, substance use provider, behavioral health providers, veterans, folks that work with homeless, unsheltered families. And of course, I mentioned law enforcement, but that includes our response teams, APD, BCSO, our Albuquerque Community Safety Teams, MCT and CIT teams. So really is to create a temporary ad hoc sort of working group that could look at sort of how do we really move into what I would consider a next phase of doing what's best with our best with our behavioral health dollars? Because I know that most of our families really understand that that's the way we get to public health and safety is when we're alleviating some of the behavioral, when we're really addressing with resources and care and full, full supports, the behavioral health and mental health and substance use disorder needs of our families and communities. So, I'm not gonna, I'll, I'll stop talking so much, but in the end, we're asking that the, this working group would, you know, gather the information, really dive in, look at the gaps, work with the county staff to really develop recommendations to be effective to move it and, and really support our county to, to continue to build a, a great system of care for our, our residents and address our public safety needs. So, I know we have an amendment that I'm gonna ask for Commissioner Olivas to introduce the amendment to item number six.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to consider the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. Second.
It's been moved in seconded and so now we can go on to, oh, sorry. Now I'm on, it's been moved in seconded and now we can go on to the floor amendment?
Floor amendment, right. I will move the floor amendment. So, for our commissioners, item number six, we just wanted to add, and you should have the amendments, amendment in front of you, that this working group will be a temporary working group unless otherwise extended by the Board of County Commissioners. The working group progresses, progress in 2023 should follow the timeline laid out in items A through D in the amendment you see before you. Welcome any comments or questions about the amendment.
Madam Chair.
Before you, Mr. Casada, I'd like to give the sponsor a moment to speak and then Mr. Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really want to extend my deep appreciation to Commissioner Barboa for collaborating on this resolution. I think that we have something before us here tonight that gives us an opportunity to go from good to great when we're talking about our behavioral health care continuum here in Burnleyo County. As a new commissioner, I've received quite a few briefings on the great work that our behavioral health care staff and programs are doing and our contracted providers. We have really built a system here that, that is filling a gap that is an incredible gap. There is immense need here in Burnleyo County and across the state because of a systematic dismantling of our behavioral, behavioral health care network over many years. And so, really a big kudos to our staff, our, our county manager and everybody that's working in this program for, for what they've done for our community and where we are from where we were. And I also wanted to, to follow up with that and say that I want to express, express my deep appreciation for the volunteers that participate in the governance of this behavioral health care money through our steering committee and our subcommittees, our behavioral health subcommittees. And I think that their work is incredibly important and impactful to what they have allowed us to do as, as a, as a county and as a commission. So, as, as Commissioner Barboa, as Vice Chair Barboa said, this is about really taking a look here now that we've had a few years of this being in place, to go back with a group of experts, a core group of folks that really know and understand this problem. This is, this is gonna include folks from UNM, the city, the state behavioral health collaborative. These are named in here in the resolution as, as people that would be on this working group. And the sole purpose of this ad hoc working group is to bring those folks together and look at our current behavioral health care system and offer recommendations to this commission about how we make that even better. And how do we, how do we expand that care? How do we bring in more providers and offer more services? Because I think we all know that we're in a behavioral health care crisis here in Burnleyo County and this commission has to act on that. And this is really the first step of a longer conversation about how do we take a look at what we're doing now and how do we make that even better? So, and, and the floor amendment before you is, is really just a little bit of clarification of, of the steps that we're hoping this ad hoc group will be able to take and timeline. We've been intentionally aggressive here because this is a crisis. This is something that we really do believe needs to be addressed as soon as possible. And we know that there are experts in this field that are, that are ready to jump in and give us their best advice. And so, with that, I would just urge my colleagues' support and, and offer myself and Vice Chair Barboa for, for any questions.
Commissioner Casada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I appreciate the thought and, and, and definitely I support it. But as you all know, I, I come from APS and that is the major hole that is missing in this. To leave Albuquerque Public Schools off of this board is leaving the biggest and, and our best opportunity to change behavioral health here in New Mexico. You know, I was in office when they dismantled this and it wasn't slowly, they kind of did it overnight. And we lost, a lot of people lost their providers and ended up on the street. I think you all remember the shooting of, of the gentleman up in the mountains. He was part of a program. He was being serviced. And when they dismantled it, he had nowhere to go. He went into the mountains and lost his life. One of the things that I did from coming from APS is bring a different perspective. We, we tend to forget them. And it's not nobody's fault, but we do. And, and they provide more when it comes to prevention and intervention more than anybody. I, I was able to, through the Behavioral Health Initiative here at Burnleyo County, secure $800,000 in reoccurring funds to school-based health centers. But I encourage all my commissioners to look at the data at schools that actually have school-based health centers and see the difference in results when it comes to education, when it comes on to moving to higher education. My game plan here to come to Burnleyo County was one thing and one thing only when I first started. I learned a lot more and I found out a lot more problems as I became a commissioner. But my number one goal was to make sure that every elementary school has a behavioral health and a school-based health program in those schools. I've been able to recently secure the funding, thanks to the support of the commission, to bring forward the mobile, the two mobile school-based health centers that we're gonna doing. But I believe that's a drop in the bucket. And I believe if we don't have them sitting at the table, so I would like to, if it, if they're not in your, in, in your resolution, I would, I would beg you tonight to add APS to somebody sitting in these meetings because I'm telling you, they deal with this as, as equal of a large, as equal, as a problem as what we're doing just for the regular people that we serve. And I'm, I'm just imploring you to please add that because I really want to support it because I believe you're on the right track for sure with this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I, I think we have an opportunity here to vote on the floor amendment and then maybe a second floor amendment to add APS to the potential members of this working group. Is that satisfactory?
Okay.
Madam Chair, do we have a motion on the floor amendment?
So, I would like to move for another amendment before we pass the whole resolution to, to, to add APS to the working group. That would be my friendly amendment.
Thank you. I do think that's a friendly amendment. Yeah, second.
And Commissioner Olivas seconded that? So, we vote on the floor amendment as amended. Is that right?
Yeah. So, you, you vote on the first amendment and then the second.
Okay. So, any other comments on the floor amendment? The first one? If not, we'll take a vote on that first floor amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. And then second floor amendment, adding APS to the membership of this working group? Any discussion on that? If not, ask for a vote on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So, those two floor amendments. Now we go to the resolution as amended.
I so move, or it's already been moved as seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the larger? I have just one final one, unless anybody else does. Just, I feel like this is a really exciting and important resolution on our first meeting here today because this is what we, we hear from all of our constituents throughout Burnleyo County. And they're, we're doing great work like the Commissioner Olivas has said, Vice Chair Barboa. We can do better and we will do better with all of those involved. But the thing that I'm most excited about is, is this is really doing better together. That's been my theme. And so, APS added to that is great. APD, BCSO, importantly, the city of Albuquerque as well as Burnleyo County, together we can leverage the state engaging in this and it's, it's extremely important to all of our communities. So, those are my comments. And no further discussion, so I'll call for a vote on the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Our second resolution is item nine B, Capital Outlay Request to the State of New Mexico Amendments 2023. Chief of Staff Clay Campbell to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Clay Campbell, Chief of Staff to the County Manager. And I'm here tonight for two motions related to this agenda item. The first is to rescind the capital outlay resolution that was approved in late 2022 and replace it with what's before you tonight in your package. I would be certainly happy to go through with you the changes that were made while the agenda was still being prepared and before the publication deadline, if you like. I will need to make a floor amendment this evening to add some items that I just learned about from Sheriff Allen and to incorporate his request yesterday. So, Madam Chair, if I have your permission, I would like to read where these items should go in the resolution to accommodate BCSO. Okay. So, the first item is to increase item one G from $360,000 to $500,000 for SO vehicles. And that's just a dollar amount change.
Say that amount again.
Sure. $500,000 increase from 360,000. That's for item one G. I would also like to add items one H, one I, and one J, three separate requests to add for three separate items that the sheriff has asked us to include. One H will be, quote, $5.3 million to purchase, equip, install, make ready and deliver a replacement helicopter due to the fatal crash in July 2022 for the BCSO to serve 24/7 air patrol in Burnleyo County. The amendment for item one I would be $80,000 to plan, design, construct, infrastructure and purchase equipment to support a BCSO shot spotter in Burnleyo County. And then the third amendment to add is one J to read $140,000 to plan, design, construct, purchase, install and deliver a reality-based training simulator for BCSO deadly force training situations in Burnleyo County. That concludes the floor amendments I have this evening. And I stand for any questions you all may have.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell?
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this?
I have one question about the, the 5.3 million for the helicopter and I don't know if, if you can answer this, Clay, or if the sheriff, but my understanding is that there is a real intent for BCSO to work together with APD for a joint air unit, again, for, you know, the consistency and the, you know, really saving of, of dollars and, and working together. Is that the intent here?
I believe so, Madam Chair, but I would invite Sheriff Allen to come up and address your question directly.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. And your question was again?
Just this, this 5.3 million for helicopter. I mean, this is an ask. This is a legislative request and so this is moving forward. This is an appropriation, I know that. But, Em, do you have the intention of working, what is your plan for working together with APD and the re-establishing the air unit?
Yes, plan is 100% all-in to make sure that we're working together with Albuquerque Police Department. I know there's some budgetary issues. Also to move forward with search and rescue. And what many don't know is when our helicopter is down for service, we don't have a second one, so we're making sure we also have a succession plan to make sure that the air unit moves forward and we're being fiscally responsible and making sure that we're serving all the constituents of Burnleyo County.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
So, we have a motion and approval for this floor amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And that passes. And so, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the capital outlay resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second. I can second that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to make a comment also. This is, and I think you were basically saying this, but this is a request to the state legislature. This isn't a determination of, of what gets spent or what money goes where. It's a sending a request to the state legislature.
That's right.
Just to clarify for our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very important. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank Mr. Campbell for his excellent work on this. As a new commissioner, he has certainly brought me up to as, as close to speed as I can be on this. And he's a true professional and, and the rest of our staff from Public Works and Parks and Public Safety. I just really appreciate your work and, and the process that you've developed and want to thank you for this.
Thank you, Commissioner Olivas. I appreciate that.
Yes, I too. Thank you, Clay.
Thank you.
We go way back from, in different lives.
Nineties.
Different life in the nineties, yeah.
Last century.
Really appreciate your work.
You're welcome, ma'am. Thank you.
So, have we voted? Have we called a vote?
He needed a vote.
No, we haven't called a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Adoption of resolution, item C, Parks and Recreation and Open Space COVID-19 Memorial at Dr. E.A. Swede Schuler Regional Recreation Complex.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Fellow Commissioners, I'm sure you've all received plenty of emails. This is something that we feel that here in Burnleyo County that is important to the state of New Mexico. This is on the COVID-19 memorial. As you heard earlier, and I know personally, it's, it's affected my family and culturally, and I can't speak to other cultures, but definitely culturally from, from my family, it was really hard to go through what we went through. I know that you've probably received some emails stating that, you know, what about people who pass away from this or pass away from that? And I think we all can agree that this is uniquely different. It was a different time for us. It was a different way for us to be able to move on and to mourn, as you heard some of the public comment. I also experienced that there's something missing when you're not even able to go to the hospital with your loved one. Our, our funerals and how we send our loved ones on is very important and how we do that. We weren't be, we weren't even able to do that at, at the level that we wanted. I think that this is something important that we do for that process, for that healing process. As you heard earlier, our, our Native Americans were hit very hard with that and they had to live under those same rules and they have their traditions. I think this is something important into, to New Mexico because historically, even from my people, from the Dene, how we had burial grounds and we've always had paid and showed respect to our, our forefathers. And, and for some, for some reason, we all felt that we weren't able to do that and that we're looking for a place. And I'm not, again, I'm not talking just for Burnleyo County. I am talking for the state of New Mexico, that this is something that would help us all move forward. And as, as I bring up John Barney and, and Debbie Jo, and, and I, I definitely want to thank their work and their commitment to this project. We also have people from Marked by COVID. And I think that's as important to talk about Marked by COVID. Because as you know, I think a lot of my projects have all been pieced together. I don't really get funding from one source or another. I'm in Santa Fe, I'm talking to the city, I'm talking to the county. I believe this is the same type of project. I think it's not something that we're looking at county to use our, our budget to do, but to actually team up again with, with, with the state and, and the city and, and hopefully do this for the state of New Mexico. I just want to make that clear because I know we're gonna get emails saying, we don't want you to use that money for that. But I think that we have, and as you've received emails, we have a large support for But I think that we have, and as you received emails, we have a large support for families and, I think, different cultures. And all I'm speaking is on my culture. And I'm sure there's other cultures out there that also weren't able to, you know, mourn and heal and move on the way they normally do. And we think this would be a great place, not based on any really religion, but just based on a place. I don't know if my fellow commissioners are aware of the Woman Memorial that we have in my district about for the women that were found on the West Side. And that was something that was very important to this community, but this is bigger. This is for the state of New Mexico. And I have to keep pushing that point because I want the people out here who are watching this movie that we're doing something bigger than Burnaleo County. We're doing something and we're standing behind something that we believe is important for the whole state of New Mexico. I could probably give you other reasons why I really would like to support this and why I want to put it in the location that I want to put it. But I have great staff to be able to explain that to you and show you what the game plan is. So I guess what I'll start with, Madam Chair, is our people marked by COVID. And I want them to come up because I want them to explain how we're going to go to Santa Fe and how we're going to advocate for those dollars and how they've already gone to the city and they passed at their last meeting something supporting it and that we're not just relying on one entity, but relying on all the entities and the state of New Mexico to move forward. So I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeanette Nunez Del Prado, and I live in District One. I'm a bilingual, bicultural, licensed clinical social worker and expert in trauma and healing. I am the New Mexico Hub Lead of Marked by COVID, which is the largest survivor-founded and survivor-led COVID advocacy group in the nation. I began my work in June 2021, a month after I lost my father, Hugo Nunez Sal Prado, to COVID. He lived in Bolivia, where I'm from, and he didn't have access to the vaccine. He died just two weeks before he was going to come and get vaccinated and meet his grandchildren. He was healthy. We always thought we would have more time. He was only 62 years old and was so full of life. He loved to sing and dance. We would do karaoke together. He was loved by all, muy muy querido. He deserved better. When he was sick, I couldn't be with him in the hospital. I couldn't hold his hand. I couldn't tell him I loved him and thank him for everything he taught me. And my dad, despite living his life surrounded by family and friends, he died alone and in pain. And that will always haunt me. I have found much solace in being with others who lost loved ones to COVID and understand the unique pain and devastation that this kind of loss brings. Unfortunately, as I'm sure you all can understand, our grief has been exacerbated, prolonged, and even denied by the politics of the pandemic. We have not yet had adequate recognition of our losses and space to mourn. What I know from my work as a therapist is that when grief is not able to be expressed, validated, and acknowledged, it turns inward and becomes mental health problems, substance abuse issues, and other issues that I know you're all very well aware of. A COVID memorial would help us to move forward with our grief in a more healthy way and contextualize our individual tragedies as part of a collective trauma and know that we're not alone. We have partnered with Snapchat, who is a leader in the field of augmented reality, and have developed with them a virtual component of the memorial to where anyone can upload their names and photos of their lost loved ones and be able to access this memorial. Currently, we don't have any shared visual imagery of the COVID pandemic. There are no Twin Towers, nothing to help us understand the loss and the trauma. Our loved ones have been relegated to mere statistics. The New Mexico COVID Memorial will give names and faces and humanity to our losses. And we are poised to be the first in the nation to have a statewide memorial. This is huge. New Mexico should be the leader in this because of the cultural traditions that we have and our unique ability to hold space for grief and for pain and to come together. We already have resolutions passed in Corales Village Council, Sandoval County. It just passed unanimously in the Albuquerque City Council last week. And we're going to be going to Santa Fe and ask for capital outlay dollars this legislative session. We need you, our elected officials, to stand with the COVID bereaved and vote yes in support of this resolution. My colleague Eleanor Bravo will now share her story and give some more context to the memorial. Thank you so much for hearing from us.
I'm Eleanor Bravo, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Commissioner Casada, we are so grateful to you for bringing this resolution. And I really want to acknowledge Commissioner Barbo, who has emailed so many of us with such heartfelt comments. I lost my only sister to COVID October 6, 2020. She had had a knee replacement. I thought she won't go anywhere, so she won't get it. But she fell. She went back in the hospital. She was released into rehab, and she was infected in rehab. She lived five days after that. She suffered what they call a COVID heart attack. She had never had heart issues. She died alone. No one got to see her. So we feel our government failed us. So many deaths, unnecessary deaths. And so, Commissioners, we really need you now because you're our local governing body, and we need your support. We have raised some money, and we will continue in Santa Fe for capital outlay. We have a Senate Joint Memorial being introduced by Senator Harold Pope. And it will go into the House, and Representative Pamela Herndon will champion it in the House. We have already gotten a tremendous amount of support in Santa Fe. And we were so fortunate that the State Land Commissioner, Stephanie Garcia-Richard, gave us this one acre of public trust land. And I really appreciate Commissioner Casada saying that it is in Burnaleo County. It is within the city limits. However, we will work with any other county, municipality, or city that wants a memorial in their location. In fact, we already have plans for Navajo because, as you heard, the indigenous community, their losses were just inordinate. So it is for everyone in the state. It will be tied with this augmented reality to all the other memorials that we're working on in the country, in other states, and with the memorial that we're working on in Washington, DC. So we really need you. We need you now more than we ever have. We want to be able to go to Santa Fe and tell the lawmakers there that the most populous county in our state supports this. And that we know that all of us have been touched by COVID. And so this is how we are going to heal in our terrible grief. I mean, the holidays were so difficult for all of us. And frankly, I'm glad they're over. So, and if you have any questions about the structure and the concept of the memorial, which is a pilgrimage, I know our wonderful volunteer landscape architect is here tonight, Ken Romeg, and I know he'll be happy to answer. So much gratitude to all of you. Thank you so much.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to bring up John Barney. We have a couple of things that we would like to show you and the public. And I think you will eloquently explain this. So take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. John Barney, Planning Manager for Parks, Recreation, Open Space. Yeah, I think for those of us who've been involved, and again, just wanted to say to Ken Romeg, who is here this evening behind me, I mean, when we think about memorializing and creating a place for grief, for this, for the pandemic, for COVID, for, you know, something which has affected all parts of our community, you know, it's a big undertaking. It's to, or we, none of us can speak for the grief of others, but we can create perhaps a place where we can grieve together and separately. And so I think that's where we began. And of course, there's a really rich tradition of providing memorials and places to grieve and places and spaces in our cultures and in our community for grieving difficult situations. And so what we've looked at in Parks and Rec is we thought about where could we house such a place? And I think, I don't know if you want to share this graphic that's up here. I think that, you know, this is, we're at the beginning of this process. We've developed some initial concepts.
John, if you can load or bring up your presentation. I don't think it's presenting the correct one.
Pardon me?
Is your presentation up? Because it's still in the old one.
It is up.
If I can have IT come down to assist, please.
There it is.
Okay, there you go.
There it is, okay. So again, there's been a fair amount of thinking actually about this. One of our staff members, Janice Hartley, who works in parks, was actually, had the initial thought because all of us have been very involved in parks with, you know, responding to the COVID pandemic and that it would be important for the county, therefore, to actually initiate the effort to put together a memorial. And then we developed some concepts with Ken, who graciously gave his time on behalf of Decca Paris Sabatini and now with Consensus Planning. And so developed a series of graphics. But we're kind of at the beginning of the process. We need to have more of a community process. Again, this is a very significant space for our community in the future. But we did find what we feel like is an ideal location. So we looked at inside our inventory, we, there's really two regional facilities, and Mesa del Sol is one of them. And it has this space, and a number of us went out there from our upper management and staff and looked at this location. And you can see the parts of our landscape. And that, I think Commissioner Casada, you know, said it perfectly, like, we need a place. It's all about this place and this place that we share so we can share our grief in this place. And finding that space in this place on the edge of Mesa del Sol, you can actually see all the way up and down the Rio Grande Valley. You can see the San Ys, of course, behind you, the Manzanos. You can see the volcanoes across the way. You can see the Puerto Valley in the distance. You can see Cabasam Peak. You can even see the Sangre de Cristos. You can also see Multiladron Peak and Magdalena Peaks down to the south. So you start to see all of our state right from that spot. And so that's sort of, it's kind of like a gathering in, much like, you know, would happen traditionally, you know, for thousands of years, places were located because there were parts of the landscape that mirrored back to this place. And so it's in this place that we want to come from and, you know, and create space for grieving. So that's really all I wanted to share at this point because I think we're early in the process. We will be back with more concepts as they develop further and as we have community meetings and processes to really look at, you know, what are some of the choices that need to be made? Anyway, for a memorial, it's hard to say this, but we are excited to be able to host this at County Parks and Recreation.
Thank you.
That is standard for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. I think you hit a lot of the major points. One of the things I also want to talk about this spot is there's a lot of life going to be there. It's near the amphitheater where people celebrate music and where kids go and play soccer and football. And there's families and there's the moving on of life. And that's what's important to us is when we look at what healing really is, is to remember that our loved ones want us to also not only mourn, but celebrate the life that we have and the life that's around us. And what makes us unique on this planet is that. And so, you know, I think the space for me is perfect because at times it'll be busy and at times there'll be absolutely nobody there. It'll be very solid. So depending on how you like to grieve or move on, you'll have both those options in that location. So thank you so much for the thoughtful. Debbie Jo, thank you. You guys are awesome. You'll find for our new commissioners how awesome Burnaleo County really is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And I asked for your support. I'm sorry.
Did you make a motion for approval?
Yes, I move for approval.
Seconded by Commissioner Barbo. Any other comments?
I just wanted to make a quick comment to say thank you for sharing your stories. Thank you for bringing this forward. It is incredibly needed. Who hasn't been impacted by this, right? We're in a global pandemic that hasn't even ended yet, but as you marked, we're, you know, approaching the 9,000 mark just for our state. You know, this, I'm incredibly grateful to you all for bringing it, Commissioner Casada and our staff for planning it. I think the location is perfect. I live near, not far, from Mesa del Sol. And I've lived there my whole life. And so as a kid, my father would take me back there. And I've just, I've always loved the beauty, and I'm so excited that this memorial could be placed somewhere like that, that just really captures the beauty and the life and the spirit of our families. I'm not going to apologize for crying because one of my good friends, Lori Weaki, mentor, said one time, "It's an honor to cry for somebody." And sometimes we need to be able to cry public, and sometimes we need to be able to cry alone, or sometimes we need to just laugh in our grief. And so, yeah, I'm just very thankful for this and hope that this can bring some peace and healing. I know in our conversation, Commissioner Casada talked about just the need for healing. And I think this is definitely, I want this to be beautiful and everything our community needs it to be. So thank you, and I just wanted to say thanks.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbo. Commissioner Benson?
Commissioner Barbo, the shortest verse in the Bible is, "Jesus wept after Lazarus died." And I, so no apologies necessary. It's a beautiful thing. And thank you for fighting for your loved ones. And there's strength in that and healing that comes from that fight. And I know that's what you're doing. And it's an ancient tradition to build an altar, to remember where you've come from. And that's what this is. And I think it will be healing and just for future generations, too, just to know that this was a defining moment that we lost many people through, but many came through it also. And it's part of our history. And it's a way to not forget the history and who is impacted. So thank you for working towards this and for Commissioner Casada for fighting for this also. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just briefly, I think that I want to thank everyone that's been a part of this. We've gotten a lot of emails, and I really appreciate the fact that you're using something that is a devastating event that was put on our entire world to build bridges. And that's what excites me about this project is that this isn't just an ask of the county. This is an ask of the entire community. You've got volunteer architects. You've got an ask of the legislature. You're asking the city. You're going to the county. And I think that that is something really admirable about this. And as I've learned about this project, I think that's something that makes it very strong. So appreciate this coming before us and sorry for your losses, but I think that this is a great way to celebrate the future and the lives that were.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Commissioner Casada to close, or are we ready for a vote here?
Yeah, I'm ready for a vote, Madam Chair. Thank you so much.
All those in favor of this lovely?
Aye.
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 Thank you. That passes unanimously. Okay, we're on item 10, approvals. We have the rules of procedure. We have the rules of procedure revisions for regular administrative special and emergency meetings, and Julianne Baca is going to address this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll be really brief. These changes are minor in nature. They are to bring the rules up to date with COVID measures as far as executing documents, so it's just incorporating electronic and rubber stamp signatures on commissioned documents along with amending our 30-day publication requirement for introduced ordinances, whereas it's in conflict with state and federal law. So it's just those minor amendments, and I will stand for questions.
Any questions? I move approval if there's a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead. Second, and all those in favor. Please say a line.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item 11, we have a discussion item, Burnley County Comprehensive Public Safety Priorities, and I will ask Commissioner Olivas, I've worked with him on this, but I'd like you to lead that discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I do want to add here that though it's not reflected on the agenda, this is an item that Commissioner, Chair Baca and I are working on together. This is something that we've actually been working on for a long time through our campaigns and now into government. All of the, this, the draft resolution for this is attached to your agenda packet. Really, this is, again, kind of the start of the conversation here, but one of the things that, of course, we all know up here is that public safety is a huge issue here in Burnley County, across our state, across our country. And in drafting this resolution and thinking about how we address this as a county, one of the things that was very important to us is doing so in a comprehensive way. Too often, I think, that for necessary reasons, we get trapped in thinking about one individual component of our public safety apparatus, and public safety is a very broad term. We have our sheriff here and representatives of our Deputy Sheriff's Association here tonight. We have our fire chief here. Many times we hear about MDC, which is one of the largest expenditures in our budget, our corrections officers. Many people may not know, our Sheriff's Department also runs our Judicial Protection Division, which is our courts protecting our judges and people using those facilities. The list goes on and on. We have animal care services. When animals are abused, people are abused. And so we have to look at this in a comprehensive way. Code enforcement is another piece of the public safety picture. What is happening in our structures and our land uses is often a clue to what may be happening inside of those to people, to animals. So really, in drafting this, we wanted to think about how we look at our public safety priorities in Burnley County in a comprehensive way. We heard from Mr. Zamora tonight, the recruitment and retention challenges that we're seeing at the Sheriff's Department, which we're seeing in law enforcement fields across the country, but particularly concerning for this commission because that is our, we appropriate money to that body and we have to keep track of what's happening there. So I had our, some of our staff worked on putting together some numbers for what kind of vacancy rates we have and the number of positions that we have in some of these departments. Our fire department is vacant 11 positions. Our Sheriff's Department is vacant 37 positions. And as you heard from Mr. Zamora, we're currently in a situation where we have more folks leaving that department than we have coming in, meaning that that number is likely to continue to decline. We have 16 vacant positions in our court security specialists. That's a 46% staffing rate. Our animal care services department has 12 vacant positions. Our communications dispatch center has eight vacant positions, and our metropolitan detention center has, I'm not sure the number is on here, but 45% staffing. So we have incredible need in these departments, a lot of vacancies. And of course, I know that that's true across county government. I run a small business. It's true across private industry as well. But we have an obligation as a commission to try to look at this and look at this in a comprehensive way, that looks at the needs of our county and the needs of our public safety apparatus and address that in a way that we can have an informed conversation about what it will take to reach staffing levels that are adequate. And frankly, when you look at these departments, remember, these are just the vacancies in funded positions, and I'm sure you could talk to directors in every one of these departments in here, a case, for why they need more than what they're even funded for, yet we can't even get staff for those positions that are funded. So really, what we're proposing to do here is ask our team, and we do have an excellent team, as I'm increasingly learning from our county manager on down, to really take a look at some of these areas and offer us the raw facts, the data. What kind of vacancies are we looking at? What kind of compensation packages do we need to be competitive with other similar agencies in the region, in the metro, and in the state and nation? But we're also looking at some other things that may improve efficiencies. One of the pieces that we talk about in here is the combined dispatch. This is something that's really important in some of the commission districts where we have a checkerboard, city-county, and we have to ask ourselves, is it efficient for us to run two separate dispatch systems? When someone calls 911, they want someone to answer and be there. They don't care if it's coming from the county or the city. We recently saw the city make some changes to their open space police force and their open space division, and we were asking some of our staff to take a look at what we're doing, what we could do to partner with the city, to partner with other law enforcement agencies and other folks in the metro area to make sure that our open space areas are protected. My district includes all of the East Mountains, a lot of open space areas out there, and a lot of fire danger, fire danger on our open space lands and national forest lands, and that's another piece of this, is not just looking at our fire department and the staffing and compensation they receive, but looking at our fire preparedness and what kind of systems and needs do we have so that this commission can have an informed conversation about the entire public safety apparatus that our county government oversees. So again, I'm introducing this tonight, we're introducing this tonight. I know that we don't technically have to do that. We're doing that because we want to gather input from our fellow commissioners, from the public, of course, from our staff, and I know that we're already setting up meetings with different stakeholder groups to talk about these needs and talk about how we have this conversation in the context of our upcoming work on our county budget. So really, I just wanted to bring this forward and start this conversation and let the public know that this is something that we're going to be very engaged in, and engaged in a way that is both comprehensive and collaborative, because this is about not go it alone. This is not about rob Peter to pay Paul kind of thing. We want to be collaborative with our partners at the city. It doesn't help if we're able to expand the ranks of our Sheriff's Department at the expense of APD. That doesn't do any of our citizens any good. We have to make sure that all of our boats rise together. So with that, I just wanted to introduce that, and I welcome any comments or questions from fellow commissioners, and I imagine that Chair Baca may want to add to that.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas. I guess I would just say a few words because I used to be a planner with the City of Albuquerque, and I had a mentor who said, "Make no small plans." So this is a very big, broad, far-reaching, comprehensive plan. There are a lot of components in it. I think we have A through Q right now, and our county manager said, "Ah, let's see if we can't work on this before we go for adoption." So this really is a laundry list of good ideas. We've started by talking with our BCSO, our Sheriff Allen, and we will be talking with APD with our counterparts, and I would encourage the public to take a look at our agenda, and this document is within that agenda for tonight's meeting. And if you have ideas of what you would like to see, because we all know our community is, one of our highest priorities is public safety for our community, for our families, and that's our intent here, to take a look at what we're doing well, what we can do better, and you're going to hear me say this again and again, what we can do better together between the City of Albuquerque and Burnley County. So I will just stop there, and you'll be hearing more about this, and we're going to be working and rolling up our sleeves on trying to make our community safer for our families. Any other comments on? Vice Chair Bow.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to Commissioners Olivas and Baca for bringing this. I think it is, this discussion is such needed, the opportunity to gather and really deliberate and find solutions that I really see it connected. When I talk about public safety, I believe it's in there, and just ask that as you all discuss this, right, that our behavioral health needs, I think I mentioned earlier that I got the statistic today that, right, like 45% of the folks coming out of MDC are facing homelessness, right? Or that I've learned over the last two years that severe mental illness and how that impacts our jails, our law enforcement, and all the systems that connect each other. So I think just being able to look at, I'm really excited for you to bring this. I'm excited about our new leadership and how our Sheriff's Office can be at this table with some new direction. I was told before that, and I think of like the programs like that we're just seeing, where crisis intervention teams or how we can relieve some of our public safety issues. So just thankful you're bringing this, excited for the folks to be able to come together, make something, and just thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? So we...
Madam Chair, I just wanted to close with one thing, to piggyback on what Vice Chair Barbo was talking about here. I neglected to talk about this, but a really essential component of part of what we're proposing here is partnering with the city on some of their really successful behavioral health, social service models. Many of you may have heard of ACS, the Albuquerque Community Safety Department. I spent some time before my life here on the Civilian Police Oversight Agency Board for the city, and that was during the time that that agency was being set up. And we've actually seen incredible success with ACS taking call volume off of our first frontline law enforcement personnel, but also making our community safer by dispatching the right resource at the right time, depending on what the need of the situation is. You don't always need a badge and a gun at every call. Some things call for different measures, and so that's something that's proposed in here, finding ways to collaborate with the city on that program to make sure that we are a partner in that and that we're not reinventing the wheel. Let's help the city and let's make that program countywide. That's something that we're talking about in here. And in consultation with the sheriff, we've also looked at some things like the Violence Intervention Program and the LEAD Program, which are important tools for our law enforcement partners to have, to use other methods to look at some of these public safety problems. So I think that the behavioral health component of this is essential, and it's a key part of what we're talking about.
Thank you. So I will move on to our item 12, which is announcement of our next meeting, which will be Tuesday, January 24, 2023, administrative meeting at 5:00 PM at the Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers. And with that, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Good job, Madam Chair.